He went to the city to issue notice that there was, he had no license.
Yes.
I was like, you can get the final inspection.
We'll have inspection on it.
He's a St. Kenny out there who's swaying from calls. No. Yeah, he's probably about one or two days. I've seen his expression again.
I actually, this was my, I would last, I actually.
Okay, we will call to order the meeting for the Shenandoah City Council held Wednesday, August 11th at 7:00 PM. Call the roll and notice that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and then if you would like to stay standing, we'll say quick indication.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored in Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Dear Lord, we come before you tonight, and as always, we start off by saying thank you for your love, your grace, your forgiveness. Thank you for loving us perfectly, even though we're an imperfect people. So we'll make our way through this agenda tonight as best as we can. We'll do so, and we'll try to remember that our purpose up here is to honor you and to honor our residents. And though we may not always agree on each and every topic, we'll do our best job to diligently look for the solutions that best serve the people that put us up here in these positions. Pray these things in your son's name and all God people said.
Amen.
Okay, well, good evening, everybody. We will move right into item five, which is Citizens Forum. And I didn't have anybody sign up to speak. Obviously, there's a second Citizens Forum if you would like to. So with that, we will move into item six, which is Council Inquiries. Anybody have anything right now?
Pass.
Yes, sir.
Okay, well, then with that, we will move into item seven, which is Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the 2021 Tax Rate.
Mayor and Council, per truth in taxation laws, we have to have an official vote on record establishing if the council would elect to go with the no new revenue rate or lower or above. That will then trigger a public hearing that will be at the August 25th meeting before the approval of the budget. This item is not to discuss what the tax rate will be. It's just to discuss that we could possibly go over the no new revenue rate, or we're restricting ourselves to go with it or below. Currently, the past couple of years, we've kept the same 1799 per hundred valuation rate. This year's the first year that the no new revenue rate actually falls below that at 1737 per hundred valuation. The voter approval rate, it's also in here, that is .344 per hundred, but we have never gone above the voter approval rate. If there's any other questions, let me.
Could you explain why it's that way? Is it the appraisals that are doing that?
So the no new, oh, the effective tax rate, and I hate the new term for it, no new revenue rate, basically will take your same parcels from last year, look at them, and yield the same dollar amount. So if your appraisals are higher, your revenue, your tax rate will be lower because it has to meet that zero increase line. So the appraisals do add to it, yes.
So if we kept the rate we've got now, we'd have to have a public hearing, correct?
Yes, and that can happen at the same meeting to approve the budget. I just need a five-day public notice.
And the max percentage of revenue is 4%? There's a cap?
Which, the rate or?
The voter approval.
No.
The voter approval rate.
Cap on revenue.
The revenue increase.
Revenue increase has a cap. The revenue, there's a cap now on revenue increase?
That would be your voter approval rate.
Right.
Mm-hmm, and that's at 0.344.
Okay.
So if you go above that, that's that 3.5% increase. It used to be the 8% rollback, and then SB 2 had lowered that down to a 3.5% allowable. So that would be the highest you can do without triggering an election.
So just out of curiosity, did you back into what that math would be, what that would put the tax rate at? If you, if we went to the max of 3.5, did you back into that what that would put the new tax rate at?
Uh, the three, I can.
Just, if you didn't.
Yeah, I could get it for tomorrow night.
We talked about that in Budget Workshop.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just curious, okay.
Yeah, I haven't done that, sorry.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax rate above the no new rate.
Second. So you have, so Council McLeod made a motion to approve a tax rate above the no new revenue tax rate.
Right.
As recommended, right?
And Councilman Ramaker seconded it.
That if you want it to, because you have to have this vote in order to trigger that public hearing. So even if we go with the 1737 or below, we'll still just have that minor public hearing. You know, if anyone wants to speak, they're more than welcome to, and then we'll do, we'll move on to the vote.
And this gives council time to discuss.
Yes.
Decide where you want to be on that rate.
So the 1737 rate would basically be the tax rate if we had no increases to.
No new revenue.
To the budget.
With the parcels from last year, yeah, mm-hmm.
So if we had no additional costs than what we had last year, that's what our tax rate would be.
Mm-hmm, to keep it flat. Obviously, there's been new development and stuff like that, so you'll have a little bit of a buffer, but there's not a whole lot. If you look at last year's certified values versus this year's.
So if we adopted the 1737 rather than 1799, what's the difference in?
It was, I believe, $73,000.
So we would lose $73,000 off our budget?
Mm-hmm.
Which we're going to talk about tomorrow. This is a placeholder, it's just a placeholder that lets us.
Yeah, I'm absolutely against a placeholder.
Yeah.
I'm absolutely.
It lets us schedule a public hearing next week.
I'm absolutely against having a public hearing and absolutely against raising our revenue.
Okay.
I think that we're better than that. We can come up with $73,000 on our budget. That's the difference. If it was $700,000, I would be, you know what, we're going to have a public hearing.
We're not saying that we're not. We're just saying that we're going to go through. We're saying we're going to go through the process to figure out what the rate should be.
And I'm saying that, no, we should automatically say that there's not going to be a tax above the no new revenue rate.
Any more discussion? Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor of a tax rate above the no new revenue tax rate of 1737?
Aye.
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 All opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four one. Okay, item eight, which is Discussion Regarding an Ordinance Regulating Vehicle Maintenance. I believe this may be Bill.
I guess maybe Councilman Fletcher, this was a situation that I heard from and staff heard from many council members, that over the last period of time, we've had more and more cars that are sitting jacked up, with no wheels, some in the yards, being worked on, and just left for, Stephanie could help me, some of them over a month at a time. And so as a result of that, we've propounded a proposed ordinance for discussion tonight. It's not for a vote, it's for discussion, whether City Council wants.
Speak a little bit on that topic, would that be okay? Well, would you mind coming to the podium? Would that be okay? I'm just curious, as long as, for the discussion of this particular ordinance, how many violations have you seen? Do you have a list of those? Can you give us some background on it?
So the ones I've seen, since I've been here, I've had four total.
Pull the microphone. Are we on YouTube? I don't see the little blue light on. We are? It is, okay.
I've had four total, two of which were at the same address. So I followed, you know, what the ordinance said to do, and three of them were abated by the owner. The second one on the same property, we had some outstanding issues with that vehicle, which is now corrected, but it was pushed past the ordinance allowed time.
Under what ordinance, then, would you be writing these up?
Um, it's under the abandoned or junk motor vehicle ordinance. It's.
I believe that's 30 or 31 days.
So it's 30 days on private property.
30 days on private property, that is, is there a specific, like, what's the, and forgive me for not knowing that, is it?
So the junk vehicle ordinance is one that changes back and forth.
Right.
It'll either read, it has to be inoperable and have expired registration. As it reads right now, it's or, so it can either be inoperable or have expired registration.
You've been in other cities, what have other cities done similarly?
This exact.
The same exact.
It's 30 days on private property, so you drive, you go and do your initial inspection. That 30 days starts from that date. You take no enforcement action for those first 30 days.
How do you?
Go ahead.
On the 30th day, that's when you notify the property owner that there's a problem. And typically, you'll give them, you know, a few days, up to 10 days, to cover it, move it out of public view, or fix it.
How do I, as the person that has the vehicle in my yard, how can I avoid it temporarily? I mean, what would a person do to kind of reset the clock?
There's nothing you can do. So it's not per vehicle, it's per property.
Okay.
So if you've had a junk motor vehicle on your property, and you've been notified of that junk vehicle, you cannot reoffend that junk vehicle ordinance for 365 days.
Ah, okay.
So once you start that initial process, and that first junk vehicle, you've notified the property owner, you don't have to notify them again. You can move straight to the citation process.
What does that mean for 365 days? So it doesn't have to be 30 days continuous?
No.
In other words, if they had, if it was on jacks for two weeks, they took it off for three days?
That's different.
And put it back on jacks for two weeks?
It depends on if they've had the same violation in that calendar year.
Once they violate for 30 days.
Yeah.
It can never be, it can never be up again.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
I feel like we're just creating an opportunity for a loophole. I mean, I mean, if somebody wants to, they run out there on day 29 and go.
And that's what's happening.
Put the wheels back on, yeah.
That's what's happening.
Well, and that's what this ordinance changes.
Yeah.
How so? Because this ordinance.
It can't be, basically can't be up in the grass at night.
So basically, what happens, it's like, you know, we have a noise ordinance, we have a broken glass ordinance, we have a grass ordinance. Basically, this prevents somebody from working on their vehicle way late into the evening, so you're not hearing the impact hammer going through the night. It requires them to put the vehicle back off of jacks through the night, onto looking, you know, acceptable in a neighborhood. And then they can come back, it doesn't prevent them from working on their vehicle in their driveway at their house at all. They could do that anytime if they want. It just prevents them from having their vehicle dismantled in their driveway for long periods of time. And it's not one property, it's multiple properties. I mean, we've had issues on Savannah, we've had them on Enchanted, Rosewood, Woot, obviously Shenandoah as well, you know, it's all over the city, it's not in one place.
No, mm-mm. I've only dealt with four personally at this point in my career.
In how long? What time period?
Um, I started in March.
Because I drove around today, every city of the, every street in the city.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't see a single vehicle up on jacks.
No, you won't at this point, no. I've addressed the ones that I've seen. I've only had four that have gone to.
The 30.
Close to the 30-day mark. Most of them, just that first interaction, just the educational piece, they'll correct it themselves.
A couple of questions. So Bill, we already have illegal parking in the grass, right? If you can't park in the grass, that includes working on it.
No, I think you're working on the driveway.
But with the grass portion of this.
The grass portion, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about, the, yeah. So I guess I'm looking at pieces of this that seem to be redundant with other ones. And I agree, I don't want to hear, you know, tools going off in the middle of the night. We do have a noise ordinance that starts at 10:00 PM. I would suggest if we assign hours, that we be consistent and go 7:00 AM, 10:00 PM. Basically, everywhere there's hours, that should be, you can work on the car from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. That's already our noise ordinance, it's our construction ordinance, I believe those are the same hours.
Except on the weekends.
So, yeah. What are the weekend hours on construction?
I think it's after eight.
Eight.
I just, whatever those hours are.
I agree with that.
I just put the, plug those same hours into here. But like I said, the grass, we shouldn't have people parking in the grass. I noticed this on Savannah.
We had five today.
Parking in the grass.
Including the one at this specific residence that we're all thinking of, they were still parked in the grass today.
Well, first off, let me, let me address that too, because this ordinance wasn't created for one.
No, I'm not saying it was, I'm just saying that particular, on Shenandoah that we just mentioned a second ago.
Right, well, that's the play that's on Facebook. And that's not the issue. I mean, obviously, there's several other issues in the city besides that one.
No, I get it, but we all just, we all just referenced the Shenandoah Drive, so as long as we're going to reference it, we might as well own up to it, that that particular house had a car parked in the grass today, along with four others that I saw. So I think there's a bigger systemic problem in that we've got to enforce our ordinances. Now, whether or not this ordinance is, you know, going to be passed or not when we vote on it, is a whole other issue, but we've got to start, we've got to start enforcing the ordinances that we told residents that we would enforce. And so if we want to come up with something that is enforceable, then that's, that will be the council's decision to vote on. What I'm concerned about is, is this something that really is enforceable? Because we can't even get people to quit parking in the grass right now. So are we just?
Yeah, I was talking about a couple of weekends ago, that two trucks on Savannah would park, passenger tires on the curb, driver's side tires all the way in the grass. Like, there's no need for that. They, to my knowledge, they weren't working on them, they were just parked that way. So, yeah, I agree with the mayor's point, that there's certainly pieces of this that can be addressed just by enforcing the current ordinances, because parking in the grass is never allowed. So.
And I guess I'd like to see them side by side, though, because I haven't read the other ordinance of how, every last detail of it, so just kind of like, okay, where do they overlap? What are we adding? Are we just modifying that one instead of a new one?
Okay. So, I feel like we've been talking a lot, Charlie?
Well, I'm just looking at it, I'm, I really don't like the language of the ordinance the way it's written. I'm really not attuned to the times. I'm not saying that what Councilman Fletcher's talking about, I'm not against that, but just this ordinance, whether, we could possibly strengthen the other ordinance if some of this is covered. I think we need to look at both of them.
I'd like to compare the two ordinances to see what overlaps and what doesn't, and see how we can adjust the current ordinance to meet these needs.
Yeah, this is really just the first that we're kind of talking about it now, so I didn't have any background on it before coming in here.
I do like. Well, that's why we're here for discussion.
Yeah, the, being up on jack stands for extended period of time is, it's not just nice, or it's going to be a safety issue. I mean, imagine your rear wheels are up, your parking brake's ineffective, the whole thing's based on whether or not it's blocked correctly. Putting it down on wheels is the proper thing to do. And I get, you know, sometimes things take to the next day. Well, put the wheels back on and put it down, jack it up the next day and get, finish up the job. I don't really see the reason for a car to be up on jacks for a month at a time.
Yeah, I think I've seen a car that had like.
Even several days at a time.
The whole rear, the whole rear axle was off, not just the wheels, the whole rear axle.
Like, this can't be a, yeah, that's really the one piece of this that I think is somewhat unique.
Have you seen other ordinances in other cities that were drafted similarly to this?
No, the municipalities that I've worked for prior all just pulled it right out of the state statute, and this is the way they enforce it.
This is the state statute?
Yep, not, I don't, the one we have right now.
The one, the current.
The current, yeah.
The 30 is a state statute.
Kind of like everybody else, I agree with the spirit of what Councilman Fletcher has proposed here. I think maybe there's some tweaking or some language that we kind of have to mull over, you know. I hate to keep somebody from being able to work on their car past 7 o'clock at night, because what if they work till 6 o'clock at night in downtown Houston, and when they get home, they got to work on their car? I mean, it's, you know, so little stuff like that, it's just, you know, trying to, you know, trying to make sure we're covering all the bases, but there's no question that curb appeal matters when it comes to property value. I have a neighbor just down the street who just sold their house, or is in the process of selling their house, and they had about five cars that were always parked in there, either driveway and/or street. And so when they put their for sale sign on their house, they moved all of their cars that were on the street down in front of my house on the street. Because their real estate agent told them, hey, you don't want somebody driving up and seeing this, it's going to reduce your curb appeal, and you're not going to get as much money for your house. So this is a real thing. I mean, if people are driving down the street and they see this in a driveway, and they're on their way to go buy a house, it's obviously going to reduce the value, given the surrounding environment. So I get it, it's important, it's important to protect the other residents' property values, I just don't want to overstep at the same time. So I agree with the spirit of it, we probably just need to noodle through it a little bit.
Absolutely.
I have a question, Mr. City Attorney, can you, are we limited as to how much more restrictive we can be over the state ordinance, the state statute?
Yeah, the, we can be as restrictive as we want. The state statute is really an abandoned vehicle statute. And I'll have it available to you next time. When you read it, you're going to be saying, wait a minute, this is for cars that are left along the freeway or whatever. So you can imagine that to cover the whole state, there's a lot of regulations in there about, is it registered? Has the registration run out? How many days and things? So, yes, we can, we can be more restrictive.
People do have options, they, everybody has a garage. Whether or not they can get a car into it is another matter, but if you want to work on cars, maybe do it in your garage, and put your nice fan on, and stay out of the sun, and.
See, only in America do they keep their most expensive vehicle outside than their junk.
Their garage.
And I'd go do that.
Some people, maybe they need to just clean out their garage, just so they can put a car in it, so.
Well, that's, that's why, you know, I wanted to bring it to you all, without having, you know, rushing to approval, rework it. You know, the spirit behind it isn't to prevent somebody from working on their car, as you say, whether they get home at 6 o'clock to stop at 7:00. I'm a big proponent of property owners being able to do what they want with their properties. This is no way is designed to take away their right to be able to work on their vehicles. However, it is an issue in our city in some spots. And it's not just on Shenandoah Drive, that's probably the most visible, because people drive, I mean, that's the primary exit to get out of, out of the city. So it's designed in spirit to be, because we were stuck with the abandoned vehicle code, there wasn't a lot of things that we could do over a period of time. This just makes it, you know, and we could change it however, I mean, we can change the times, we can change days, I mean, rather than saying everything has to be done in one day, they want to do it over two days, or a weekend, or whatever, you know, something of that nature. But you're right, you know, if we want our enforcement officer to be able to enforce our ordinances, then they need to be written in a way that's going to enforce it.
And I think we need Troy's input, too, for some later.
Absolutely.
Yes, and the other thing is, we have to keep in mind that this is an ordinance covering the entire city, not just.
Only the residential.
Yeah, not just a, well, I'm saying the entire resident, the entire residential portion of the city, not just one specific street, like Councilman Fletcher said, or one, or one particular area, and, and we're not an HOA. So we need to, we need to draft an ordinance that is meaningful, fair, and enforceable, if we're going to draft an ordinance of that nature.
It needs definitions.
Yeah, that's right.
We have also had to approach commercial properties about junk vehicles before, too, so it's not, you're right, it's not restricted to one particular place.
Anything else, Stephanie, you'd like to add that we should be aware of?
No, I think what you're saying makes perfect sense.
In general, are you in favor of bolstering our current ordinances to?
I am. The current ordinance is tricky to enforce. I think the, the time limitations on those, they're too long. It's allowing them to create a hazard for far longer than it should be.
Okay. Good knowledge. Anybody else? Okay, well, with that, then, we will move into item nine, which is Discussion Regarding the 2021-2022 Proposed Budget.
Mayor and Council, as you'll see in the agenda pack, the departments that we're going to talk about tonight is Public Works, Pool, Parks, Water Sewer, and Utility Billing. I don't have any updates from the last budget discussion, and is there any other questions before we start talking about these departments from previous discussions? No?
No, I'd like to get Joseph's opinion on Public Works, I guess, on the, I asked Lisa about the Equipment Replacement Fund, and just looking at the capital projects, like, you've got a skid loader on there. Why couldn't we purchase a skid loader right now out of the Equipment Replacement Fund?
So me and Joseph were talking about that earlier. There is some excess funds in there right now that were allocated for a salt system replacement at the pool, which is no longer needed, because we're going straight to chlorine system. So that replacement will start next year for the chlorine replacement. So there is a, there is a small, not a small, there's a pretty good amount of money that could be reallocated with a vote at the next council meeting. I have to require a vote for it to reallocate those funds to possibly buy a skid loader or put it back into the general fund, or we can look at it that way.
Well, I'd be in favor of having that on the next, the next agenda, Lisa.
Yes. We can have that, and I'll get the phone number.
Yeah, thank you.
I'll have the number for tomorrow's night's discussion, just so we know, and then the official vote will happen at the second August meeting.
Cool.
If everyone's, we'll, we'll figure that out tomorrow. If everyone's, we'll figure that out tomorrow. Any other questions, general questions?
No, the pool, with all the conversion to chlorine from the salt, that's gonna be a lot of work. And it's gonna have, I talked to Woody during Tuco for school, and it's gonna be probably after the pool closes.
Yes.
It'll be in the next fiscal year.
Well, what we're looking at doing is actually in early September, to keep it in this fiscal year. So the pool's open for weekends, and we've talked with the contractor and said that, you know, we'll start on a Monday. And he's assured us that he can be done within a couple of days, the pool balanced again, so it can open. There won't be any closings of the pool. So we can, we can do it during the week and it can be open again.
Well, that's what Woody-
During the weekend for the public.
Yeah, I just didn't know with the-
Yeah, we discussed that, because we, I wanted to make sure that we didn't have any pool closures. And we can avoid that.
Yeah. All right, if there's no other questions, we'll go on to the actual individual department discussions. So the first will be Public Works. Public Works had an overall decrease. Most of it was, well, most of it was a reallocation. The fire alarm inspections and the fire extinguisher inspections were moved to community development to fall underneath with the new fire inspector. And the electricity utility went also down. Everything else pretty much remained the same.
And I just wanted to point out that we do have an item for repairing the street signs. And I know that Joseph has a program, that he has a rotation where he places out a certain amount of the signs every year. So this was a reminder for me to say, once in a while, people go like, oh, my sign is faded. It's on a rotation. We're gonna get there.
Yeah, we just finished a change out of about 35 signs. And when we finish it, we start a new list for the next batch to order and get replaced.
And this allotment's here every year, so.
Right.
Okay, thanks, Joseph.
Joseph, on your routine preventative maintenance of the vehicles, I noticed in years past, we had two, basically, types of maintenance rather than just preventative maintenance. It seems like you've pretty much negated just down to a lump sum of what it cost you.
So if you look in the budget book, it's broken out with the basic preventive maintenance, full preventive maintenance, registration, state inspections, brake checks, and tire replacements. It is broken out in detail. And I've tried to true up those numbers each year based on actual expenses. I believe last year I decreased the number of tire replacements because we just weren't replacing as many. But each year I look at it and try to true it up to anticipated expenditures.
It's funny that you say that, because I had noticed that you have, it looks like, you know, six, you're counting for six vehicles. You had two tires per vehicle, 12 tires, six registrations. But then you only had five state inspections and five brake checks. Is it, they're on a rotation that they don't, there's one vehicle that doesn't need a brake check? I'm just curious. I just saw it, it just kind of threw me off. I was like, wonder why there's only five there?
Oh, yeah, I mean, so when we originally took this, it was from the police department's routine maintenance, and they needed, you know, I trimmed it down a lot because they need a lot more brake checks, tire change outs than we do. You know, Public Works trucks don't get in high-speed pursuits.
Thankfully.
So yes, I did just reduce that if we needed five throughout the year.
Okay, I'm just curious.
And I was just curious, you weren't cutting yourself short, that's all.
No, I try not to. As you can see from previous years, it kind of jumps between, it depends on what happens that year. It jumps around, so I try to, I try to hit that medium ground and not over budget.
And that number's a total allotment anyway, so you, it doesn't have to be spent on those particular line items.
Right. Yeah, if we need more tires replaced and less brake checks, it's got some flexibility there.
But just, it's, that description, those description items are more for like internal tracking and also for transparency. Okay, any other questions, Public Works? The next department's Pool. Pool did have some changes. They were on that itemized sheet that I just sent out today for changes. The new decrease to the pool budget from last year is $13,000, primarily due to the removal of the salt cells and also the removal of the salt cell replacement towards the equipment replacement fund. So that's pretty much self-explanatory. Also, they did have a fire alarm inspection that moved to community development to fall underneath the new fire inspector. So if there's any questions for Pool? Okay, so moving on to Parks. There's also a decrease in Parks, about $4,000. We had one-time purchases that hit this account last year for tenants backboard, so that was removed. And I think that's about it. Any questions for Parks?
How much is the mulch budget?
Oh, let's see here.
They've been spreading a little thin lately.
So we get two mulchings through our contract with Land Care, but also budget an additional $3,500 for mulch on top of that, whether it's at the equipment, you know, exercise equipment, or most of that is spent on the playground with the kitty cush mulch that we use there. You're right, they, the last time I, they did a mulch spreading, they went pretty thin. I griped about-
They seemed a little economical.
I gripped about it, and they went back the next week and added to it.
Okay, you stay on them.
Any other questions for Parks? So move on to the next department, which is, well, a whole new fund is the Water Sewer Fund. The first part will be the Water Sewer expenditures, and then the second part will be utility billing. In Water and Sewer, there was, there's a decrease, obviously, because there's no projects allocated at this point. And then also, there was a one-time water line repair that, for about $40,000, that was removed because it was a budget amendment. And there was also the one-time engineering for some engineering costs for about $12,000 Any questions on Water Sewer?
So on the income side, we're still looking, we think we're gonna get $35,000 in tap. We do talk about the income too, just-
Oh, yes. So I was-
Go wherever you want. Well, I mean, I-
No, you're fine.
Yeah, I wanna make sure we're on the same page.
So, sorry, can we get that, sorry, limiting it with space over here. For the tap fees, I have them currently as 35. We're already at 31. I think we still have enough development that we will be fine. Obviously, the following year, we're gonna have to tamper off, but I think-
That's why I didn't know where we were. We thought we were gonna get enough development, or we're, really, we sort of had maxed that out. I mean, over the past years, we were $118,000, $78,000. This year, it looks like we're gonna hit right at 35. Are we looking at a big reduction next year? We still got, I think you just answered the question there.
Mm-hmm. These numbers were done in the beginning of June, so there's probably been some difference. But I am gonna reevaluate these revenue numbers one more last time because we had another billing go through. When I, when I, and I did a flat from year over year just because it was a new rate. I didn't know what, really what was gonna yield. We had a really wet summer, so a lot of different factors going into this. I should have really good numbers by tomorrow. I just wanna go through one more time because we had a billing just go through, so.
Okay, so we'll see that tomorrow then?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic.
But what changes October 1st is we move out of our tap fees, and doesn't our, sorry, I'm having to say-
Impact fee.
What's that?
It's the impact.
The impact fee kicks in October 1st, which-
That's true.
Will change these numbers drastically.
Yeah, impact's gonna be one that's kind of hard to gauge. At least with tap fees, we know there's set developments and stuff. So, yeah, so I'll have updated numbers tomorrow for everything, based on what's going on. We had a really wet summer.
That's not factored in here.
Right, that's a good point. That's a good point.
We had a really wet summer, so hurt us a little bit.
Yeah, I'm seeing the water usage, which is good.
Yeah. Any other questions for Water Sewer? No? So the last department's gonna be utility billing. There was a decrease in utility billing as well, primarily just some minor printing expenses that we were gonna do with the customer update, but we end up doing that in-house. And that's about it for that. There's a decrease of about $1,200.
Okay, so my favorite, you know, is the, is the credit card fee.
So we, I'm working with a consultant right now to go out for banking RFAs. And in those discussions, there will be what's out there, what different bill pays, what can we save money on? That's part of the discussions we'll have with the banks. We're having a Q and A with anyone that wants to apply for the RFA before we publish it and post it, so that we get better feedback before we get into there.
So it's broken down into two areas. There's the fees for the credit card transaction.
Yes.
And then there's the fees for online bill pay. So what type of service would be considered online bill pay that fees aren't charged?
So the online bill pay is gonna be that $1.25 transaction fee that Incode imposes from using their software. And then the credit card fee transactions will be the actual interchange fees that's on top of using a credit card. So that's that, usually it's a flat rate plus a basis point.
So there's an Incode fee for when I use a credit card as well?
Yes, $1.25.
And there's a fee every time I use like an ACH?
ACHs with our current contract, Wells Fargo, only charges me 20 cents.
And what about debit? What about debit cards?
So debit cards, there's no $1.25, well, online, if you use a debit card, there is. But if you come in and use the point-of-sale terminals up front, there's no $1.25 transaction fee. It's just whatever the interchange fee is on that.
And if I have my bank automatically send you a check, there's no fee?
Mm-mm.
And if I send you a check, there is no fee?
Mm-mm. In cash, there's no fee as well.
But the $1.25 is a pass-through, right?
No, we eat that.
We eat it.
We don't charge a $1.25?
Mm-mm. We don't charge a $1.25 or the interchange fee.
That's why we do the, that's why we were doing the ACH, the dollar discount, if you sign up for ACH, because it-
It saves us money.
It saves us $1.25, so we pass on a dollar.
And currently with our contract with Wells Fargo, ACH, each ACH only charges us 20 cents, I think, the transaction.
Yeah, it'd be great if we had like a lesser fee coming from our bank, but definitely the credit card fees are one that we can easily do without because that's truly your choice. There's other ways to pay that we don't incur those with.
Yeah, with the RFA process with the new banks, that's one of my main, is what's out there? What else is out there that we don't know about? And it starts that conversation with Incode and see if it's viable. And Tammy's been working with Incode, they've been updating a lot of their stuff, offering new payment options. So it's just slowly evolving, slowly getting there. But hopefully after the RFA goes through, I'll have more answers and we can look at that again. I just want to jump ahead, and then we switch banks and everything changes. Do you know what I'm saying?
But we could at least do that for the credit card fees.
Yeah, yeah.
Do what?
We could, we could-
You can still use your credit card, but the fee to use the credit card would be passed down.
We could, yeah.
I mean, we're gonna come back to 30, I'm sure, but I mean, dollar-wise, what's the difference between commercial and residential use on the-
On the credit card side? Yes, okay. We did look at that a couple of years ago, if there was an option to only charge, but if you're gonna charge a fee, it has to be straight across the board per the PUC, Public Utility Commission. Yes.
Still would like to know what that was, or that dollar number.
Yep. I could just do for the past year. Yeah.
So we're not willing to spend $12,000 a year to give people the option to use their credit card, but we'll spend $260,000 a year to pay for their trash?
$311,000. I think it's over $300,000. It's $311,000 this year.
Yeah, but everybody benefits from the trash. If I send a check in, then I'm subsidizing you who use your credit card.
Okay, what if I don't have as much trash as you do? Or what if I'm, what if I rent? You know, what if I live in a condo or an apartment or?
Still have to pay trash.
I mean, yeah, but, I don't know.
It's in your water bill.
I feel like we're just-
Well, I agree. I think that, you know, we increased water rates last year, this year, to be standalone and try to get a million in reserve. But if I'm reading this correctly, we now have a million in reserve and are still charged on the same rates.
Based on my revenue numbers that come back after tonight, yeah.
So that was, that was my whole issue before.
And that's before projects.
I'm all for Public Works standing on its own, or utilities standing on their own, and to continue to try to come back to this over and over again on $12,000.
I mean, I'll take it a step further. I'm not as concerned with things standing on their own. I actually want to give our residents every break we can.
I agree.
And so to me, it's just, $12,000 bucks, it's not a big enough deal to go after a resident on a credit card fee. I just-
Here's the other issue with the credit card fee. That means the bill got paid.
Yeah, that's right. At the end of the day, we-
I mean, we got the money. And think about, if you're in a position where you don't have access to cash for whatever, for that month, the option is to eat 3% or 0%. I mean, I hear Ron-
Yeah, I'm not minimizing your, I'm not minimizing your concern on the dollars from a business standpoint.
But the reality is, we got paid. And so that means we got 97% if we take away the 3%. I know the math's not real that way, but we got the bulk of the money so that we can continue operating and stay sound. That's just something else to consider.
I know that we were looking for something, we're gonna have to offset somewhere for the $70,000 for the net new revenue.
Sure.
So this is an option.
We might, yeah.
Fair enough.
I mean, it's fair enough. Tomorrow, when-
Tomorrow, we'll talk about it.
If, when it all adds up, depending upon whether that number's black or red, then, you know, we start making choices.
Any other questions on utility billing? No? Okay, then I'm done.
Oh, when you're asking them about their, ask them about the other bill pay methods as well, like ZAL.
Yeah, that will be basically when we get into the bank, but yeah.
Okay, well, if no other questions for Lisa, we will move on to item 10, which is discussion and possible action regarding the following. We'll do these separately. A, excess debt collections for 2020. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the excess debt collection for 2020.
Second. So I have a motion by Councilman McLeod, I think I have a second by Councilman Raymaker. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. B, certification for debt service collection rate for 2021, 2022?
Move that we certify the debt collection rate for 21, 22.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher, I have a second by Councilman Scotto. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. We'll move to item 11, which is discussion and possible action to approve the minutes of the June 9, 2020, 21, regular meeting.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Scotto, I got a second by Councilman Fletcher. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, I made a slight typo correction with our city secretary. It's the first statement, says Councilmember McLeod stated that Shenandoah Sharks swam to raise money for the Food Allergy Research and Education Foundation and raised $6,000. It's a typo, it doesn't change anything that was actually stated.
Thank you for that. Any more discussion?
Ted seconded.
Yes, yeah, we had a, we had a motion by Councilman Scotto, a second by Councilman Fletcher. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Motion carries 5-0. That moves us to item 12, which is citizens forum. And I didn't have anybody sign up to speak, but if anybody would like to. Going once, twice. All right, we'll move to item 13 then, which is city administrator updates.
Counsel, I don't have any updates tonight.
No updates, we're in the dark. Okay, then we'll move to item 14, which is council inquiry. And we'll start with Councilman McLeod, since he wasn't here.
Yeah, I don't have any right now.
He didn't come back imparting any knowledge on us, okay.
I'm sitting right here right now.
All right. Councilman Escado?
I only want to say that I attended that TML seminar for newly elected officials. It was very, very informative.
Well done, appreciate that. Councilman Fletcher?
I'm good this week.
Councilman Raymaker?
I'll pass.
Okay, well, with that, then I don't have anything pressing. Just as always, thanks to our city staff for helping us stay the true course and thanks for everybody that came tonight. And with that, we will adjourn the meeting at 7:53. Thanks, everybody.
We'll be back.